Please rise for the other allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America and to the Republic, which is stands one nation under God.
Invisible. Justice for all.
For all.
For all. And so, welcome to our January twenty fifth. Period and school committee meeting. Uh, we are on item number three, open forum. I believe there is a community member who would like to address the school committee. Um, just as a reminder, her policy of the school committee, open forum cannot last longer than thirty minutes. Each speaker is allotted three minutes and you cannot um reference items of. Personnel litigation or contract negotiations. So I believe uh it's Mr. Hemling wanted to speak with us.
That is correct, Dr. Locke and Dustin Hemlin, um please uh turn your camera on and unmute yourself, sir.
Great, so please just introduce yourself and your address.
Hi there, my name is Dustin Hemling, I live at seven thirty nine East Road. On December sixteenth, I requested to be on the agenda. I have a copy of the request. I submitted to the superintendent's office as required by the rules. I was denied the opportunity to be on the agenda for January eleventh and then also for tonight's agenda, but what I have to say shouldn't take longer than. Three minutes uh at the most, so I hope that's okay. Um, I'm here tonight regarding the book um All American Boys that's currently being taught in our ninth grade English class. Now, I've read the book and I would encourage everyone else to do the same, but I'll quickly read the synopsis. Um, All American Boys is a young adult novel that looks at a specific instance of police brutality from the perspectives of two high school classmates. Rashad, who is savagely beaten by a local policeman who wrongly suspects him of shoplifting and assaulting a white woman. And Quinn, who sees the beating and initially pretends he didn't. It's a fictional reflection of real life police encounters with young black men that ended badly. Uh, this book is currently ranked number three on the American Library Association of Most Challenged Books in the United States, and it has been since twenty twenty. Another book on last year's Tiverton Summer Reading List, The Hate You Give ranked number ten on the same list. Uh, both books have been flagged by the LA ALA for profanity, drug use, alcoholism, and promotion of. Anti-police views and divisive topics. I'll read a quick excerpt from the book, it does extend, uh sorry, contain explicit language uh that for the most part I've censored. Um, and this conversation is between two teenage boys. Since when have you ever gotten off your ass, let alone thrown a punch when you were stoned, man? F U C K U, man, no, F U C K U, Quinn. That dude doesn't do drugs, his dad would kick his ass. You do drugs, a-hole, just a puff here and a puff there, man, come on, I don't do drugs. There are several more passages I could read, but I think you get the idea. Tonight, I want to pose two questions to the school committee that I posed to the superintendent's office yesterday. Why does Tiverton have books being taught in school that are in the top ten most challenged books in the United States? I mean, it's a fair question, with thousands of books to choose from, why did we choose these? I mean, a simple internet search brings up uh the titles brings up several red flags, for lack of a better term. And my second question, if my child was caught using the language in this book or referencing drug and alcohol abuse in the school hallway, would there be disciplinary action taken? The answer is unequivocally yes, and there should be. There's even a sign, a sign posted in the district office that says profane language is subject to arrest and prosecution. Under Rhode Island general law, but apparently thirteen and fourteen year olds reading in class, listening to it on audiobook is acceptable. Is this the the district's current stance? Unfortunately, in today's world, a school district only gets attention in one of two ways. One, when the school board meetings descend into chaos and are broadcasted on social media for the world to see. Or number two, because they're exceptional. We should choose to be exceptional. I'd like to read one more excerpt in closing. My mother and I had calmed down and were watching Family Feud, laughing at some of the stupid answers people were coming up with. Name something you might find under your bed. A monster. No, they don't hide under there no more, or in closets, Spooney said, making an entrance as usual. They hide in plain sight with uniforms and badges. Let's not teach our children to vilify the people that we trust and pay to keep us safe. Why don't we teach them that ninety-nine percent of the men and women in uniform would throw themselves into harm's way to protect them without question? I'm very proud of what I did during my fourteen years of law enforcement, and I know from a real real world firsthand experience who these men and women are. And I can assure you that they're not monsters. We can do better, we have to be better. Thank you very much for letting me speak in the open forum tonight.
Okay, um, so just to clarify, Mr. Hemling, you were not denied for the agenda, it was just felt. After considering your request that you are best uh served by speaking in open forum. So um, I believe Ms. Gray, you'd like to make us. Uh, speak in open forum as well.
Yeah, I prepared something um read about how the book selection came about. Five years ago, in an effort to increase my students' interest in reading in my college prep level classes, I decided to look for a contemporary novel to pair with To Kill a Mockingbird. A novel taught in the ninth grade as well. I went to the library media special specialist Vicki Blazer, and together we looked through resources provided for educators for searches such as this. After utilizing sources such as the School Library Journal and the National English Teachers Association. And Vicki's familiarity with the book, we ultimately chose the award-winning All American Boys written by authors Jason Reynolds and Brendan Keilay. On a side note and of importance is that Jason Reynolds is the recipient of a Newberry Honor, a Prince Honor. An NAACP Image Award and multiple Coretta Scott King Honors. Reynolds is also the current National Ambassador for Young People's Literature and the author of the twenty twenty-one Read Across Rhode Island Selection Stamped. The book is told in first person from two different characters, one of a white teenager and the other of a black teenager. Providing connections for all readers around race relations and controversial topics that are issues in America today. The main theme of the novel is standing up for what is right, no matter how difficult that may be. A theme that is also at the forefront in To Kill a Mockingbird. This realistic fiction novel explores real life events that students are exposed to when they turn on the news. And also provides real life characters and different perspectives, and that is what makes the book award-winning. To address a few concerns, while I do not condone vulgar language in my classroom, or my home for that matter. To pretend it doesn't exist is not the role of a high school teacher. I am certainly not teaching this language or exposing students to vocabulary they are unfamiliar with. However, it provides an opportunity for a discussion on audience and the effects of inappropriate language, and it makes the book relatable. Because like it or not, this is how some students speak when they are not in the company of their parents, other adults, role models, and teachers. The same applies to the brief mention of underage drinking. When caught by his mother, the message is sent to the character that this is unacceptable behavior. Is underage drinking a reality for some? Absolutely. Am I exposing students to something they don't know exists? Absolutely not. Is underage drinking mentioned in classic words of literature frequently taught in high schools across America? It is. Not only is this novel enjoyed by a majority of students, it highlights important and controversial topics that are best acknowledged in a classroom. Where they can be read together by adults and students. I've taken the time to comb through the vast resources available for teaching this book to provide my students. With a productive reading experience where no race, gender, or occupation is targeted. Rather, a running discussion is held about individuals acting alone and perspective and a deep look at character and motivation. Why this book is on the top ten most challenged books of twenty twenty-one. It is accompanied by the beloved classic Pulitzer Prize award winner To Kill a Mockingbird. As well as Of Mice and Men, written by Nobel and Pulitzer Prize winning author John Steinbeck. It should be noted, though, for those of you that are unfamiliar with these lists. That the previous year, Harry Potter was on this list, and in recent years, The Kite Runner and the Bible have been on this list as well. I am proud to have chosen this book to be read in my classroom. However, due to new state mandates, we will be moving to a purchase embedded curriculum, and this book is not part of this curriculum anymore.
Thank you very much, both your views. Um, unless there's anyone else would like to speak in open forum, we're gonna move on. There's nothing on the consent agenda. So we're gonna move to item. Five, I believe it is, let me just get my agenda up. So item five, on a new business, five A, ride five-year capital plan uh funding, uh Dr. Sankeyani.
With that, thank you, Dr. Locken, tonight we want to give you some information on Tiverton submission for our five-year capital plan. We've been working on this now for about a year and we're getting close to the point of submission. Um, this plan allows us to submit projects to ride that then qualify us for reimbursement, as you know, Tiverton's base enforcement is thirty-five percent, but. Sometimes we can achieve up to forty plus percent on these projects, so it's imperative for us to have a five-year capital plan. We've been working with the architectural firm RGB, we're fortunate tonight to have two of their associates with us, Ms. Tracy Darling, Mr. Andrew Barclay. And they're gonna talk you through where the existing plan is currently. The funding sources and a decision the school committee has to make about how these projects will be funding. And they'll also get into uh the overall cost of uh creating this five-year capital plan, so. A pleasure to have you here tonight, Tracy and Andrew, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone for uh having us tonight.
We're gonna share a screen with you all, please tell us if you. See it, if you can.
Think we're good.
Do that, okay.
Okay. All right, well, this is.
Really nice from this view.
Right, see if I can get this to, well. There we are.
We've had this slide before, we've been in front of you before, but we just wanted to bring this back, so you recall that we are a team. RGB Architects, as well as our consultants. Mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, structural engineers, civil engineers. Um, professional cost estimator, uh technology consultant have all gone through your buildings. And have been working on each line item that's identified in your capital improvement plan. Again, this is the ride process. Um, for the necessity of school construction application, we are just about heading towards the uh stage two, some middle to ride. Um, that is due February fifteenth. Um, from that, from that point. Um, your application essentially would be approved and you would get a letter of memorandum of agreement. Of that from the Council of Education, and then once that's executed and signed. Um, you move into what's called stage three and stage four. Stage three is the um design development where we actually draft and draw the construction documents. It involves design reviews with RIDE for schematic design, design development, and construction documents. Um, and then, once that's approved, you go into the bidding and construction stage four phase. Um, the reason RIDE has you go through all these steps and submit a necessity of school construction. Is so that you are eligible to get reimbursement on each project that's identified in that stage two application. You have five years from the time of approval, so this next application would bring you through um June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Your current housing aid reimbursement, your base share ratio is thirty-five percent. There are some bonus incentives um that the state has offered to. Get you five percent on each bonus or two to four percent on energy efficiency. So you could be looking at reimbursement up to forty-seven to forty-nine percent on your projects.
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Sure.
Um, yeah, on the the center bottom, there is mention of. A deadline of come to commence construction by December thirtieth of, oh, twenty-two. I apologize, I can't remember what year I'm in.
That's okay, that was critical.
Yeah.
That was um critical, obviously, so that you could um. Get your plan in place so that you could take advantage of those incentives. We have heard unofficially that the um deadlines are going to be extended or renewed so that. It won't be an issue to um be conscious of these deadlines, they will change and be extended.
Can I just quickly too, just to so that I make sure I'm working off the right um agenda and backup, was this provided, Dr. Sankeyoni, in our backup?
Uh, no, it wasn't, Ms. Kalish.
We can um after this presentation, we just prepared this presentation, but we can certainly give it to the school department to uh post publicly or to uh distribute to the school committee members.
It's now a public document, so it needs to be both, actually.
Okay, so we'll send it um to um the school department after this, and then you you'll have a digital copy.
Thank you.
And and just one thing I would add to, we tend to go over it kind of quickly. From the stage two to stage three process, uh your your building committee will be involved, and then, of course, you as the school committee will be involved in this too, so it's not like. It just marches on without your understanding or or review, so um just throwing that out there. Go through a series of steps. In the last year, we've gone through a a number of uh workshops, they've been digital or virtual, but we've looked at um. Safety and security at the schools, your existing school, we've looked at uh some concepts for. Environments, the the educational environment you currently have. We've discussed uh the technology needs uh that you currently have or or have actually just put in place uh due to COVID. And um we've looked at some of the special programs and some of the special needs. So that was one component of this, was a a visioning process or discussions, trying to open these up to as many people as we can. We've had some one-on-one with with Peter and and of course, his administration, the principals here this evening, but we've also had. In invited as many people to join as possible, so that's gonna be part of the submission, sort of a record of that conversation. Um, we've also had a a demographic uh report that was undertaken in the last year. And what was interesting about that, the result of that, is that we were looking at Tiverton staying pretty stable. Basically, almost exactly where you are right now. Um, it looks that the projected forecast of the next, over the next five years is only gonna see an increase of twenty-nine to thirty students. Um, across the whole district, of course, that could change if anything happens in terms of uh economic uh change or housing that comes into the Tiverton area. Um, but you also know that your school programs are uh. Large enough and adequate enough to to take on more students, so that's kind of a positive uh as well, so. Those are two, two steps we went through. We also went through a a whole series of uh evaluating the facilities, your current buildings, and looking at them for. Mechanical systems, uh the roof, conditions of your roofs, conditions of your windows. Conditions of flooring, basically a facility assessment, going through each building to find out what could be improved. For health and safety. Or or what you might want to move forward with in the next five years, and that's called your capital improvement plan, or your five-year CIP.
Andrew, before you go on, I just want to, I mean, school committee, where this is what we provided to for you in your packet, the um draft five-year capital plan.
And what it, what this does is helps sort of line item or or what quantify the amount of of money you may be spending, we've had an estimate conducted. But it also sort of uh puts a strategic look at what project should be considered first, or or maybe have more priority over the next five years, so.
So what we've been working on since we developed this five-year capital improvement plan. Is for each item that's on the plan, we have to show schematic design level documentation. So we draw actually, or identify through drawings, say, the number of doors that have to be replaced. What type of door they'd be replaced with, um and then we send those drawings to the professional cost estimator. He does his estimate, and then we will align the actual um takeoffs with the. Numbers on the capital improvement plan, so probably all of these numbers may change, they were our numbers at first, now we're getting the professional cost estimate.
And is the professional cost estimate something that RIDE requires?
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
So thi- this is just a slide capturing some of the the conditions that that are included on the capital improvement plan. Uh, looking at addressing uh abating and removing vinyl asbestos floor tile. Any type of paving or sidewalk repairs, exterior repairs around the school, so you don't have trip hazards. Uh, we're looking at security um at all the entrances, so a security vestibules. Or security film on on the glazing around the entrance so that they're hardened, make a a more secure entry condition. Uh, we're also looking at renovations to the gymnasium, the locker rooms, the shower and toilet areas. Um, there's been a lot of interest in improving the toilet and restroom facilities throughout uh the district, but especially at the high school and the middle school. Again, gym dividers, partitions, some of the bleachers that are worn. Um, and then building technology and the infrastructure upgrades for the schools. Uh, has has kind of been identified as a need, and then also plumbing and distribution system, that that in the older school. Condition where they're just starting to fail and that needs to be replaced or repaired, basically replaced, not repaired, so. We went through a number, and these have advanced beyond this now, these were. Bo- bubble diagrams or adjacency diagrams, but we started looking at educational enhancements, what could we do? In the elementary schools, um at least initially at the elementary school, for the the libraries, could they be updated? Um, and renovated to become more of a multimedia uh center, something that would offer the opportunity for all the students at all levels to to. Go to a place that's uh energized, a place for engagement, for sharing. And so we went through a series of of looking at how those spaces might be adapted and renovated for technology, lighting. Acoustics, um and even the furniture. This also then translated into the high school, the middle school as well. Uh, I don't have any images of it tonight, but it's basically gone through the whole uh district schools. And it's something that there's an interest in focusing on, so. These have already advanced beyond this, say colorful diagram into a schematic design drawing. And these renovations are part of the plan also that are being priced to get an idea of how much it might cost to affect these changes.
Sure, so and continuing on that, we're also um looking to uh provide some educational enhancements at both the high school and middle school. And that again would be in the same theme of converting the old library to a high-tech multimedia uh center. With um new technology labs, engineering, robotics, drone technology. Upgrades to the high school auditorium, as mentioned, renovation to the um existing uh. Antiquated gym locker rooms, showers, toilets, and providing new fitness and training rooms and renovation to the middle school science labs. And we just, just sorry to go back, we did break it out a little bit to the health and safety and the educational enhancements to align with the bonus incentive points that you can get from RIDE. And if you do a project that has both health and safety and educational enhancements, then you would get the additional ten percent, you'd get five for each bonus point.
Hopefully you can see this, but uh it's a little pale. Um, but thi- this is basically how it broke down, at least initially, and this will be refined, but at this point, we're looking at uh. These different expenditures for each each school, so uh for health and safety and educational improvements or betterment. We're looking at plus or minus uh eleven, ten, nine um at the high school. Uh, we are looking at at the middle school, similar health and safety, educational betterment, right around ten million. At the elementary schools for Fort Barton, we're looking at six hundred and eighty. Uh, seven thousand, a cassette, seven hundred and fifty thousand. And a ranger about one million, um one hundred and twenty thousand. And then there's some additional money for improvements to the field and athletics, um the exterior improvements for uh. Coming in around one point three, one point four million dollars. So the capital improvement plan combined at this point is twenty-four, uh basically twenty-five million dollars. Align that with your your base ratio share of thirty-five percent. You're looking at. Uh, an eight, eight point six million in terms of reimbursement return from RIDE. Uh, but again, if we look to include health and safety and educational betterment and some of the other incentives that you should receive. Um, you're gonna fall into a range of somewhere between one point two to three point five additionally uh on top of that. Number, so it looks like. Plus or minus, you're you're somewhere after ride reimbursement would be completed, if you spent that amount of money. Uh, it come in at about sixteen million dollars in terms of need.
That's based, that's the maximum cost that it would be based on the thirty-five percent, the minimum reimbursement, so again, you could be up to the forty to forty-nine percent on some projects.
So. I guess where we are tonight.
Yes.
Is is trying to make a determination um of how you would want to proceed uh for funding uh to. To pursue that amount of money. If it's something that can be carried under your capital expenditure, or is it something that you would consider uh going for a bond uh with the town for? I guess the the major points are easy to read, but the five-year capital improvement plan is is similar to a line of credit, and then you're. You're proposing you'd like to spend this amount of money, RIDE would approve you for the amount of money on the their memorandum of agreement. You don't have to spend it all, um they typically request that you at least try and spend fifty percent of that money.
And for anyone that was involved previously on your memorandum of agreement that expired June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Was a similar issue, I believe it was for approximately twenty-five million dollars, and the district spent. About fifteen million over the course of five years. Um, so again. It's got items on there trying to anticipate what the needs will be over the five years and better to have it on there, so if you decide to go ahead and pursue it. You can get that up to forty-nine percent reimbursement, if it's not on the plan and you do a project. Um, you would not be eligible for reimbursement.
The example, if you want to.
Yeah, so this is, we think we know the answer, that you you would be funded primarily from your capital expenditures. Um, but we wanted to show you the options and make sure you understood what they were and and have a discussion and um. Get some direction on how you want to proceed on that. There's an example from another district that's on the screen. They had a, we cropped it a little bit, so you can't see, but they had a uh bond-funded column. That tallied seventy-one point four million dollars. They were going for a big bond, um and then in their capital expenditure, their five-year capital improvement plan, they had an additional. Three point six million dollars um for a total application to ride to seventy-five, let's say, seventy-five billion dollars approximately. Um. So that's what they were going in for, it happens that in this particular district, the bond did not pass. So everything that was in that column that tallied seventy-one point four million essentially is off the table. So for the next five years, they had the three point six. So for the next five years, they had the 3.6 million dollars to work with for funding reimbursement. RIDE doesn't see it that you can move projects or funding, approved funding from the bond-funded column to a capital expenditure column. It's one or the other. You can submit both in your application, but as far as they're concerned, it's one or the other. Then in the five-year capital improvement portion, you can move that money from year one to year five. You have that five years to do that 3.4 million. You could do it all in one year, you could do it all in the last year, or you could do 1.7 over the five years. But just wanted to make sure that you understood if you put a project in the bond column, it stays to be funded by bond. And if you put it in capital expenditures, that's again where it would stay.
That makes sense.
Any questions?
So I'm gonna ask for motion to approve the capital plan so we can open discussion.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So for purposes of discussion and question, so I have one and it's about that last point. I'm close to certain that we never made a decision about bonding versus capital in our last plan. And as far as I understand, we still were eligible for reimbursement. So that was a new twist to me. Can you enlighten me anywhere on that? Because you guys were actually involved in that work as well for the most part, although some of it not so much, but certainly the the major renovation that went under the bond of 15 million.
Yes, we were. And we were also involved with the previous necessity of school construction application, which would have been submitted to RIDE, which I would have to call it up, it should have identified projects to be funded by, I think it was all bonds. I believe it was all bond in your previous application.
There, no, because there were things that we did. There were things that we did, maybe they weren't in the application, I guess. So like the draft walls, the ceiling tiles, lights, some other improvements that we made incrementally over the five years of that capital plan, because actually, didn't you guys do the facility study too?
Yes, yes, we did.
So that was 2013, I think.
Yes, so I would have to call up your previous plan. But I know that it was identified primarily as bond and then we worked with you for the bond campaign and
Right.
getting that through.
If we put it all in bond, but then I, so the intuitively, I would say, okay, we'll say, we'll say it's all in the bond, you know. Some of this is a pipe dream, I recognize that.
Yeah.
Before anybody gets too excited about 24 million dollars. But if we said it's all in the bond and then we did it out of capital, they would not reimburse them?
Yeah, you couldn't do that.
Have to break it out.
Yes.
So we, before we actually submit this on the 15th, we have to segregate what we would think we would bond versus what we think we would expend out of capital, which is
Yes.
tough, you know, you have to be really good at reading tea leaves in this town and nobody is.
Right, we were, we have been working a little bit, but we wanted to have this conversation with you tonight under the assumption that everything would be carried under the capital expenditures. And based on your anticipated one up to 2 million dollars a year that you may be appropriated, that money you would be looking at over the cost of five years, about 10 million dollars. So maybe we cap the five-year capital improvement plan at about 20 million dollars with the anticipation that RIDE would expect you to complete about 50% of your application.
Okay. And I'll just make one comment by way of context. So we are, just for the rest of the committee, we probably by the by RIDE's estimation, I think we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 45 million dollars of needed capital improvements about four or five years ago. So I'm going to open it up to the rest of the committee. Mr. Dakotas, you want to go first?
I'd love to, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, guys. I had a far-off question, hopefully you won't let me ask it.
Never.
I'm gonna play the card, even though I've been on the committee like one year, one month. Yeah, fly anymore, but Barrington Middle School just opened this year, I know it took a while to build at a cost of about 68 million, if I read. If something like that gets approved, do they get about half of that back from RIDE when they build a brand-new school like that?
So every district has a different base share ratio with the minimum being 35%. And then with those bonus incentives, I'm not sure exactly what Barrington's reimbursement rate was. I would say it was probably about that.
Yeah. And and they more than likely pursued, of course, across the district. They were looking at health and safety. But they probably did some consolidation, so they had newer and fewer. And that would get them into that 10 to 15% on top of their base ratio. So they did newer and fewer, they consolidated and health and safety, they again, they could have received at least 15, an additional 15% on their base, so very easily it could be 45, 50, maybe even 55% on the money they requested.
I think the the article I read says they said they have 850 students and about 100 faculty. You know, I think at any given time, whether you're looking at our high school or our middle school, I mean, I think the average class is probably about 125 or so, give or take for each class, we're talking about you know, 500 or so kids per school, so my mind's just turning, you know. I know our neighbors in Westport did it, although because they're Massachusetts, but East Providence just built the mega high school. Actually got a chance to walk through it, so I see these numbers, I get really excited about improving schools. But some part of me just like on my shoulder, maybe it's the angel, the devil just says, man, but you I guess we had, I had an opportunity many years ago at the elementary schools and we decided to rebuild each one of them. Or Ranger was brand new. Maybe we have an opportunity to look at something down the road where we could maybe build a junior, senior combined school or a new high school or something, so. I was just interested in what I'd expect for something like that, I guess that was my main question.
I'm sorry, is the last question?
If I, you know, maybe I can parse it a little bit, Mike, so the question I I think is when does it become more cost-effective or at least get you more bang for your buck to do new construction rather than trying to maintain that that you already have? And does RIDE look at that differently? It would seem that they would want us to preserve the structures we have because that's far cheaper. I think a new high school was in north of 160 million dollars when we talked about it with Middletown several years ago. And yeah, so so when does it make more sense to try and build a new school, which I don't see that happening, but that's part of the question. And then does RIDE look at new construction differently in terms of the reimbursement and the whole mechanism versus capital improvements? Or was a new high school or a new middle school in Barrington's five-year plan from whenever, 2016 or something?
Okay, so so the way RIDE looks at it, whether it's a improvement to an existing building or a new school, the base reimbursement stays the same. Your bonus incentives would be the same if you're doing health and safety. It's whether it's in an existing building or in a new building would be 5%. If it's an educational enhancement, it would still be 5% either way. There are some bonus incentives to consolidate schools or to address utilization. So if you have a school that's at 130% utilization, RIDE doesn't like that. So if you build a new school that's a little bit bigger and you're at 95% utilization, you would get a 5% bonus incentive. And then vice versa, if you have a school that was underutilized, say 50% utilization, you had two elementary schools that were at 50% utilization and you combine those into one school at 95 to 100%, you would get 5% bonus points. The way they determine whether it's more economically feasible to build a new school is based on what they call the FCI, Facility Condition Index. That was in the Jacobs report. And that has to do with how much investment you have to put into that building, age and condition of that building versus
What would it cost to do that?
Replacement value, yeah. Value for that. So there weren't any buildings in Tiverton that had a high FCI index that would put you into that new, you know, replacement category for RIDE.
That that was the conclusion of the facility study from 2013 or 14.
Yes. The second thing is with the past memorandum of agreement that you had, you did invest approximately 15 million dollars into your buildings with the new roof, new HVAC system. So you may have an issue with RIDE if you said, forget it, we're just gonna go build a new school and
Yeah. I don't see that ever happening, frankly, but I'm just
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know.
It's a, it's a timing, it's like a timing issue. You put 15 million in and now you want to build a new 30 million. It's dollars spent to to what you can recoup. But at the same time, if say Tiverton, not not to go the other way, if your enrollment dropped off 15 to 20% and you're trying to maintain a middle school to support 200 students instead of 400, then you have this huge building, you're trying to keep heating and operating cool and you don't need it. So there could be a case for that as well. So that's why it's important to look at the demographics to see where we're going.
Presumably, a community, so a community that has is seeking to build a new building like Barrington did or East Providence did has to make the point or has to make the case to RIDE in order to get this reimbursement. It's actually better economically to build a new building than it is to try and salvage the ones they have.
Yes.
That's correct.
So in the stage two application, there are sections of cost comparison where we have looked at, you know, looked at some of that. But that would be actually scrutinizing the schematic design level documents to make sure that what you're proposing to build meets the educational requirements of the district without going beyond that. So I believe in Barrington and East Providence, they actually, the cost of construction, there were some things that RIDE would not reimburse them for, so. I don't know, I think East Providence, RIDE approved them maybe at 150 and they built 165 or something like that. So that additional 15 million, they were eligible for reimbursement. Those were like nice to haves maybe, or we want a little bit bigger media center than the square footage that RIDE would typically reimburse for that number of students because they have all those requirements too as well.
Okay, thank you, Mike, you have the floor, I still want to promote from under you, so go ahead.
No, basically what I was gonna ask, and it just was about conversation because it hadn't been part of these previous conversations, so when you read the articles, who actually, I've been in both the buildings, they're absolutely beautiful. I mean, it's like building a new house and rehabbing an old house, right? When you're looking to buy a house, you walk in the new one, it's turnkey, it's beautiful, everyone's excited. Then you walk into a house, eh, it's not so nice to work, it could be rehabbed and last a long time. So just to cast on what what RIDE would reimburse, how it worked and if we had any eligibility in those five or 10 years, so, thank you.
All right. Our buildings, our buildings are beautiful because they're ours, so.
Yes, and if you take care of them.
Yes.
You know, they last, so.
Well, they they do actually, all right. Mrs. Pavo?
Yes, my question isn't in reference to this project, it's a question for the board or maybe even Peter. Have we finished paying our last bond? Does anyone know if we still owe money on our last bond?
The 15 million?
I thought, yes, I thought we still
Oh, yeah.
still have some debt, but
Yeah, there's still outstanding
What Diane?
There are still outstanding balances on all three elementary schools and the roof project.
Correct.
I think called in a couple of smaller bond issues that were done in between as well.
Although I think that, I want to say the elementary schools are getting close to being paid off.
Getting close, right, that's what I thought, but I just wasn't sure.
Well, depends on what you mean by close.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, that's all I have.
Pay off my mortgage with what's left, I'm sure, so. Oh, yeah, depends, bigger yardstick is. Mrs. Palace?
No questions.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Okay, I have a few. The exactly what is the ask of us tonight?
So we would be asking that you vote to approve the stage two supplemental to RIDE. And we would be asking that you vote to approve the educational program within the stage two application. This, since it's all existing schools and the educational enhancements that we're proposing are the renovations to existing spaces primarily like the library conversions to the media center, the new technology rooms, renovations to the science lab. It doesn't change really your educational vision of the district. We're not looking at grade reconfigurations, building a new school that's, you know, upper elementary, three to five, but but that is what we're we're asking for tonight.
So we have one more meeting before the 15th, which is when this is due, which is February 8th. So it's due the 15th of February. We have a meeting on the 8th, that's why I thought it was important to have this discussion tonight.
And Dr. Lockin?
Yep.
For timing purposes, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy, but this also has to be approved by the town council, so your approval goes first, they come second, we've got to time this so we can get on their agenda too. Yeah.
Yes, so for the stage two supplemental to RIDE for February 15th, it does ask for both the school committee and town council approval to submit to RIDE. It doesn't have to be one first, the other second, of course, we come to the school committee first. But if you actually wanted to vote at your next meeting, you certainly could.
Are, is it required that both bodies approve the plan before submission?
Yes.
Okay. And it seems we also have to determine what we would try and bond, assuming we ever decided to pursue that versus what we would want to do through capital, correct?
Yes. And from the time that the application is approved by the Council of Education, which would be May of 2022, you would have six months to propose for going out for bond essentially. Putting it to the voters.
Yeah. What's the date for that?
Six months from the time it's approved. It would be approved in May of 2022.
Okay. If they approved it in April, I mean, you'd want it on the November ballot under any circumstance in a regular election year, right?
That is typically the goal. Um, but of course, if you can't meet those deadlines, the districts have done spring referendums or referendums or, you know.
Right.
September, depending on how things fall.
Yeah.
You can theoretically have a referendum whenever you set it.
Right.
Canisters, but.
Right. But there's an additional cost if it's not in line with the. Yes.
Right.
So if this isn't in by February fifteenth, then then what happens? Do you have to wait a year? Do you have to wait two years?
So Ry used to accept the applications once a year, February fifteenth. Every year, they have gone to two applications now. So there's the February fifteenth and there's September fifteenth. So if you put your application in September fifteenth of twenty twenty-two, essentially you'll get an approval from Ride in November of twenty twenty-two. From that point, you have five years. That's such a five-year clock. The only issue is right now, your previous application has expired. It expired June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. So projects that you do from now till November would not be reimbursable from Ride. With the exception that we put in an emergency request application for up to five hundred thousand, it was like four ninety-eight or something to do the toilet rooms that are being bid now.
Dr. Locken, if I may?
Uh, just one question about that though before Peter. So so five ninety, and that's the maximum that you can actually do the emergency application for?
Under five hundred thousand, yes.
Under five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
So and then, but once it's approved in May, then we can proceed with work under the approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The so that, you know, there's a there's some shuffling of time there that we need to be conscious of with regard to the.
Yeah, I was gonna just say that.
By the town council.
Yep.
If we if, you know, I I would think that we would need to plan to do that work then over the summer.
Yep, that make that's a good point, Jerry.
So. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think I I was gonna try to sort out, I think, what you just did and just, you know, for perspective of the committee that there's there's, as Tracy said, there's the bid out for four bathrooms at the middle school. That's in the emergency. That's fine. I'll get reimbursed. And that leaves us one point two million to go out for the high school project. And without this submittal in time for February, that project would either be delayed or would not qualify for reimbursement. And again, you know, one point two million, you're looking at forty percent minimum reimbursement on that project. That's a pretty significant comeback.
That's a pretty quick turnaround, though, not only for, I mean, and I'm not saying we can't do it, but I can't speak for the council, but that's a pretty quick turnaround for them.
What is to get this approved between now?
Yeah, they're gonna basically be asked to approve something that they really haven't seen and we're gonna have to hope to get on one of their next upcoming agendas.
Yeah.
It's just a quick turnaround.
I don't know.
September or to February?
Well, for February, Diane, because if we don't do it in February, then we can't, we can do the work over the summer, but it won't be reimbursed only up to five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I I I think it's gonna be impossible, to be honest. I don't think we've vetted it out.
I think it's too much, a quick turnaround, too fast.
And I I do, you know, if it is a requirement that the council approve it as well, they're gonna wanna have the opportunity to vet every single line.
As you know, as they, you know, should, they should have the opportunity.
As we should as well. So you know, this is just not gonna work February fifteenth.
Yeah, I I'm there's only the timing. I'm I'm kinda surprised about the timing, given that it has to be not only our board, but another one.
If I may, Dr. Locken?
Yep, go ahead, Peter.
You know, the point being made earlier by RGB was that, you know, you can submit this plan under capital funding. And as long as you achieve a portion of it, you'll be it'll be approved by Ride. So again, Tracy was using the example, if we're given one million, two million a year in capital revenue and we're using it to fund projects off the capital plan, then the plan is acceptable. And maybe that's the confidence you need to know that you could submit this, you don't have to worry about bonding anything and just work off capital funding, million, two million a year over the next five years and know that this plan then would be achieved. Then you go back out in five years. And I think if we could sit with the town council, show them the plan and talk about how it will be achieved, you know, that to me seems like it's something that's easily up and able and could be approved.
Yeah, and and I don't think that it's on a, I think we can get this done by February fifteenth. This is not appropriation. So they're not allocating the money.
Right.
They're saying there it's a, you know, in many ways, an aspirational document that is if we had the resources, this is what we do, what we would do.
Correct.
But that's a pretty big, yeah. So I and I I feel like we should meet as many times as we need to to make that deadline because we will lose reimbursement over the bathroom renovations if we don't. And I will work as hard as I can with Denise and the council and Chris Cotta to to make sure we're, you know, we have the time to to explain things to them and hopefully get their acquiescence as well.
Um, Dr. Larkin, I I just, you know, being realistic, we got two million dollars this year. It was a very unusual grant. We have had experience many years where we've received less than a half a million dollars and even zero some years in in very recent memory. I don't, and certainly a council that turn potentially turns over every two years, they can't make promises of continued funding beyond.
They're not making promises.
Yeah, we're not asking that.
That's not what we're asking. We're asking that they approve a plan. And the the structure of the plan is that if we were gonna do X, Y, or Z, we would try to, what we need to do is to determine what we would try and ask them to designate as a potential bond versus what they would does it, what we would designate as a potential capital expenditure. None of, no money is changing hands at all.
That's not what I'm saying, Jerry. We would have to make the the requests from capital to be small enough for it to be palatable. And and I don't think that expecting a million or a million and a half a year is gonna be.
I know. All right. So so we can say, okay, that that's what we gotta figure out. You know, how much would it be likely? And even, you know, we don't, it doesn't necessarily even have to be likely. It has to be, if we were gonna try and do this project, we would probably try and do it through capital. If we were gonna try and do this project, it would probably be through bonding. None of it has to be done. We would like to get it done because that's, you know, we have to protect the assets, the most biggest asset that the town has of the school buildings. So wanna maintain them.
So if if we ask for a commitment from this board and and a commitment from, you know, the 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 town board and obviously to Diane's point, you know, boards change and, you know, we don't fund it for, you know, what we what we had hoped a year. It doesn't invalidate the plan with Ride, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
The only thing that would be invalidated is if we, the things that we designate as bond, we have to go out to the bond in six months.
Would I be misunderstood if if we did not spend, if we did not do fifty percent of what was part of the individual years outside of bonds? That that would somehow hurt us as well?
Say that again?
That there was mentioned that you you had the two tranches, right? One was to bond.
Yeah.
Then the rest of it was to come from capital funding. And the the example on our sheet was, I think, three point eight million dollars in in that fictitious school district that they spread out over five years for capital funding. And the the statement was made that putting it in capital funding said was committing you to spending at least fifty percent of that.
No, it's not committing you to spend a dime. It's saying that if you do spend it, you have to spend it through those, either of those mechanisms that you've designated in order to get the reimbursement.
And if you don't spend up to fifty percent of it?
You don't spend it.
RGB?
They they would, Ryan would like you to spend fifty percent of your application over the five years before rolling into another five-year capital improvement plan.
But that's that that's a like, it's not a.
You don't have to.
Right, you don't have to.
And and if you don't, I guess the next time we go back for the next five years, they could be less inclined to grant your next five-year plan.
Well, I, you know,
theoretically.
I'd, you know, I'd push that right back at them and say, you know, give us more money and would be.
Exactly. Right, exactly.
They, I think they, you know, recognize.
So that, and that was my question. And that was actually, and that was why I had asked the question. It's aspirational and and yes, you know, we can certainly, you know, we'd like to see it and maybe even members of the current council would like to see it. But if it doesn't happen for whatever reason, because, I mean, we could have, you know, heaven forbid another pandemic, it's not going to invalidate the five-year plan.
Right.
And typically, what you, what you do not complete, it didn't go away. So it just moves into your next request, right? So it, those are the items that move to the forefront that you would pursue more quickly if.
I mean, there's there's no motivation, well, maybe motivation, there maybe there is motivation. But it would make absolutely no sense from Ride to say, oh, you didn't, you know, replace this thing that really needed replacement that you had on your five-year plan because you didn't have the money, but we're not now gonna let let you, we're not gonna let you put it on the next one.
Correct. No, they they never say that. Yeah. They they, we haven't run into them ever saying that.
So it seems to me that they really want a detailed, very well-thought-out five-year plan. They would like you to fund it and they they want you to be thinking about capital improvements. They want you to think about maintaining your buildings, building new buildings. They want you to think about schools and school improvements, but it's aspirational. I mean, they 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 certainly need to be, you know, are realistic that, you know, you work in political environments, you work in other environments that it may or may not. But to me, to Jerry, I think you said it's 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 really just, it's it's a like, it's a plan, it's a wish.
So so then, so if we approved it tonight, the question becomes, or if we don't, you know, I think the next big question is how much, what would we designate as going through capital and what would we designate as going through bonding, assuming, you know, recognizing that neither may happen at all ever. And that gets into the sort of nitty-gritty of the documents themselves.
Right.
And I don't know if if it's reasonable to figure that out tonight or if.
There are a number of things on this list that I would consider to be non-aspirational, you know, such as replacing heating systems, telephone system.
Diane, anything we don't put on here, even if, you know, somebody dies and leaves us a hundred million dollars for capital, if it's not on this plan, we won't get reimbursed.
I understand that, Jerry. The the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, there there are some real needs here that that are not considered nice to haves whatsoever. And if that's important for us to remember as well.
Yeah.
So that might be a way that you determine what could stay in your capital expenditure and what could go into your bond column. You know, based on. Right. If it's imperative, if it's your fire alarm system, you don't wanna put it in your bond column and then you not get a bond and then you're not eligible for reimbursement to upgrade your fire alarm system or something like that.
So the, so again, back to the question, I guess I have is do we have sufficient time to do that tonight? And or should we try and designate a specific meeting since we've only the second day of the week and we've only had two meetings, so we could have a third and a fourth meeting this week?
But Dr. Long, would it make sense to try to get a joint meeting with the town council to go in detail with the scene that they have to go through the same?
I can certainly run that by them.
Special meeting?
I don't know if.
And does the building committee meet?
Not till February first right now, but they can meet. They can, we can try and.
Because to Diane's point, I think it would be nice to have their feedback or perhaps even RGB's help and feedback on sort of those things that Diane just talked about. There's not really nice to haves there, things that we we need to have and sort of splitting those things out for us. So then that's gonna give us a better idea of what potentially we might wanna put on a bond list versus a capital list.
So that this Dr. Locken, if I may, that building committee is next Tuesday. So to Ms. Palace's point, that could be the topic on the agenda. The building committee could go through this and make those determinations and get it to the school committee.
But we have to still line up with the town council as well. I was gonna say, Peter, can we pull together a meeting of the building committee on Thursday? We kinda punched through everything. Town council met last night, so they're not meeting next.
They'd meet on the seventh then.
They are meeting next week.
They are meeting next week.
I think it's a budget session.
Yeah, they'll love to talk about this then. If we had the building committee meet Thursday, I wanna get this then to the school committee before it goes before the town council. And maybe we even ask them to have, you know, half hour, forty-five minutes hour meeting just to kind of go through it with them and they can schedule another meeting if they don't feel comfortable voting on it. Then again, it's not committing money to anybody, so I I think it is something they can digest and and decide on in one meeting. But I'll talk with Denise about it as well.
And and can I just confirm? So if we put it on a bond list, it has to go out to bond. You can't move it to the capital list.
That's correct.
Okay, I just, so so keep that in mind, Peter, when you guys, when you and the building committee are going over the list.
Yep, we've already kind of done a little of that work, so that's not a problem at all. The, so Dr. Locken, to be clear, you want the building committee to meet in two days on this coming Thursday.
Well, Peter, I just don't, I think the calendar is working against us in a rather relentless way. If we've gotta go before the town council and we've gotta figure these things out. Yeah.
Okay, I just been.
Guess my answer is yes. Unless others see a different plan, I.
If we could figure out when the town council, we're gonna get to the town council. Again, we've got this meeting scheduled for a week from today on the first that everyone's committed to right now. I just don't wanna lose a lot of participation.
What time's your meeting, Peter?
The budget committee? I mean.
No, the the building committee.
Three thirty on next Tuesday.
Could we meet after at seven?
We could.
So you could still have your building committee and then have something ready for us?
It's not a bad idea.
Even if it's just highlighted and starred and.
Oh, that's exactly what we'll do. We'll color code it for you.
And then, you know, and whatever's easy, because you, you know, we get it. Take a, take a highlighter. But if we could, if they are meeting on Tuesday, maybe we could meet Tuesday night at seven and then that's gonna be our opportunity to sort of talk through capital versus bonding.
All right. And then I'll I'll see if they wanna, if the town council has any appetite for a joint meeting or I'll see what, I'll see what they say. Mike and Elaine, can you meet next Tuesday?
That's the first.
Yeah.
That looks though, that's okay on my calendar right now. Yep. Yes.
Mike? You there? You there? Mike, I think your connection's pretty weak.
Jerry, I think, given that four of us can be there, I want Mike to be there, but I think even like if we're of, even if a second person drops, as long as you can get three, given the time deadline, I think we need to
Yeah, Diane, you can meet on the first?
Yes.
Okay.
My calendar.
So let's do that and I'll talk with Denise and
And and Mike, if there's a time that's better, like earlier later, you know, let us know.
I think we may have lost Mike.
What time are we looking at right now? Did we talk about a time?
Good for you, Elaine.
Five o'clock is not good, but six o'clock is fine.
Six would work for me.
Six work for you, Diane?
Diane? Yes.
Okay, so we'll say Tuesday at six.
Okay.
All right.
RGB, can you be there?
Yes, we will be in district for the building committee meeting, so we'll just stay.
Well, our meeting will be virtual.
Yeah, we, we'll just, well, unless there's enough time to drive back, we'll probably just stay and join virtually from there.
Well, at least feed them, Peter.
Absolutely. You know, you know, we always do that.
All right, so I don't know if Mike is there. I can either table or we can withdraw the motion and we'll vote next week. I think we lost Mike. Mike?
I think that makes sense, Dr. Larkin.
I think it does also.
All right, I'm gonna ask for motion to table because Mike made the motion, he's not with us.
I'll make a motion to table until February first at six or February first.
I'll second it.
All right, I'll second it. Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote, Elaine?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Mike, if you're there?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so we're we're just tabled until next Tuesday on the motion to approve the
And Dr. Larkin, you'll take the lead on trying to get something together with um, Chairman or President DiMeados.
I will.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion on this topic?
Uh, Dr. Larkin, we, in our meeting last night, approved the S R spending minus the amounts earmarked for RGB.
Thought that was gonna come up in the S R. Don't we have S R?
Or was that gonna be part of our twenty twenty question?
No, we had, if I may, Dr. Larkin, we had arranged for that for for this evening. Tracy and Andrew are both ready to to address that.
Okay, all right. Do that.
I'm sorry, what was the question? If some of these
Tracy, it's what we spoke about earlier today, of the cost that we paid at RGB over the next year or two and how, you know, why that cost is where it's at, um, what comprises that cost, things of that nature.
It was roughly, Tracy, like four hundred and seventy-seven thousand and we just wanted to get a sense of why it it seemed high and and we just wanted to get a sense of what that's paying for.
Right, what is, what is the scope of what this money represents? Is what I was wondering.
So there are several different scopes. Um, so first of all, compiling the stage one application, this is going back, I believe, to twenty twenty, we've worked on that, submitting the stage one application to Ry. That is what they call the identification of need. Um, that approval essentially moves you to the stage two application. The stage two application is much more involved and in between that stage one and stage two application, that's where we went out, walked through all the buildings with our consultants as well. Um, like I mentioned, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, civil, um, all the engineer structural went through the building. That's when we started to compile one of this capital improvement plan. But every line item on that capital improvement plan, we have completed schematic design level documentation for. So one of the items, for example, is the renovation to the elementary school libraries conversion to the media center. So you will see we have a demolition drawing showing any walls or doors or windows that need to come out. We have a new floor plan identifying new petitions, new doors with a tag, new windows, what those finishes are, um, mechanical plans showing if diffusers or exhaust systems need to be relocated, whether there's new lighting that has to be relocated, data outlets, all of that. Um, it has been submitted to our cost estimator who is doing those takeoffs now. In addition to that, we have to have that schematic design level package for each school. Ry approves the amount by school, so you'll see on your memorandum of agreement, it will say, you know, Fort Barton, whatever it is, a one hundred thousand dollars, you know, the high school, two hundred thousand dollars, for example. So those are your thresholds for your five year capital improvement plan. Um, there's also a binder, there's a stage two checklist, um, that Tividen was provided. It's also provided on Ry's website of everything that has to go into that stage two application. Um, the educational plan is a section in that application. There's the schematic design documents I mentioned, there's the cost estimate section, there's a demographic report where we had a consultant um, do the projections on the enrollments over the next five to ten years. There's, um, they ask for just all uh, data as to um, radon reports, uh, asbestos reports, all that kind of backup, um, energy reviews. So that binder, it's electronic now, uh, because of the pandemic, but there's usually about two binders, about four to six inches tall that we've been working on um, over the course of the last six months. There'll be a roll of drawings for each school that would get submitted. So that is where the bulk of your cost has been. In addition to that, we were working simultaneously on the stage three drawings, which is your construction level drawings for the um, high school and middle school toilet room renovations that have recently gone out to bid. That involves schematic design submission to Ry, um, design development, construction documents, putting the package together as well as the specification um, and going out to uh, bid on that, as we had mentioned. So you, and you kind of have a bunch of different pots of um, scope that we've been working on at the same time. We also compiled and submitted that emergency request to Ry that would get you that up to five hundred thousand reimbursement that would bridge you in between the time that your previous M O A expired and to you submit your next and get approval on your next M O A. So that's what we've been working on. And I just want, I just want to say that, um, that soft cost, they call it, is reimbursable um, from Ry at the rate that that associated project would be.
Okay, I'm gonna open the floor to um, questions from the committee. Um, Mrs. Pallas?
No, that explains it.
Okay, so for example, whatever
For me, anyway, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes clearly that we're not seeing and that, I mean, we're not seeing it, but there's a lot of work that's going into this. You know, there's a lot of your time, there's a lot of other people's time that you're paying for and um, so it just, you know, when we looked at it, it was like four hundred and seventy-seven thousand and so what piece of, so how is that reimbursed? So I understand that.
Sure, so typically, um, what Ry refers to as housing aid is what you're eligible for reimbursement on the items you put into your um, capital improvement plan is typically how it's how it's funded. They have a couple of different sources. I'll touch base on that. Depending on the cost of the project, they have a reimbursement schedule. I believe if it's under five hundred thousand, you get your reimbursement back in one shot if it's, I think, five hundred to one point five. I'm not the finance person that submits this, so I'm not sure. It may be
So those soft costs that we pay to you, I guess, is really, I mean, the percentage is not as, I mean, it's important, but those are reimbursable is what I hear you saying.
Yes, so when Amy submits, so so for example, on the project that's bidding now, the renovations to the restrooms at the high school, middle school, when Amy submits for reimbursement for that, it would be the hard cost, which is what the contractor bid, plus the soft cost, which would be our fee or any additional fees that the school department had to incur at whatever the reimbursement rate for that project is. So for those toilet rooms, I would say you would be looking at probably at least forty percent reimbursement because you would be eligible for the health and safety bonus incentive plus your thirty-five percent.
Yep, okay.
So our fee, what, yeah, whatever our fee was, would be included in that seminal for reimbursement at that forty percent uh, reimbursement rate.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin.
Okay, um, Mrs. Pavo?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dakota's?
I'm good, thank you.
Mrs. Farley?
Um, thank you for explaining that. And it just, the light bulb just went off as well. We're not gonna see this in one invoice. This is gonna be spread out throughout the life of of this work. Is that correct?
So that, there's different invoicing as well. So, yes, that we had given you a um, a fee proposal of, of a straight um, budget amount that the proposal was for to complete the stage two work. That would be invoiced periodically till we complete the stage two work. The stage three work was a separate proposal that would have been for the schematic design, design development, construction document, bidding and construction portions of that. So we would be billing that as we're going through those different phases of that construction.
Okay, thank you. Yep, thank you.
Um, okay, and uh, so just to follow up on that. So I thought we had already spent a certain amount of money on the plan as well. So this is an additional four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, right?
That is correct, Dr. Larkin. We received a hundred thousand dollar grant from Ry to seed this project when it began.
And that's not reimbursable because that was actually a grant.
Right, with it's the, yeah, money was given to us.
Cool if it was. Um, and uh, if say very little of this work is ever actually undertaken, so say, you know, it's only five million dollars worth of the twenty-four million dollars undertaken, will that be reflected as well and how much we actually wind up expending of this four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars? Is there some proportionality there, you know, sort of to to Diane's last question?
So I have to confirm with Ry, but I believe this, you could submit for reimbursement for our, for any soft costs associated with the stage two application and then separately for the construction documents of each project. So if, we're not gonna charge you to do construction documents on a project that doesn't go forward.
Okay, yeah, that's that's probably a better way of
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Farley, any questions?
Uh, no, no, not at the moment.
Okay, and any questions from any of our administrators? And I don't know if there's any questions from the public, if anyone's listening. Okay, I appreciate that. I'm gonna ask for motion to approve the remainder of the S R three funding span, uh, plan of uh, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to complete the uh, capital improvement plan through Ry.
Yeah, S R three is not on the agenda. Can we approve it on the first?
Yeah.
We could.
No, unfortunately, no, because the application is due to Ry on the thirty-first of January.
Well, if you do a temperature check for us, Dr. Larkin, um, we certainly could submit the application with the vote following.
Yeah, you could submit the application with um, with formal approval coming on the first to just confirm.
Yep.
Okay. All right, then.
So I just wanted to clarify one, one thing that you just said. If you utilize S A three money, um, that would not be eligible for reimbursement.
Right?
Because it's already fed, it's already money that's been given to the district.
That's right, yep, yes.
I just, yeah, heard that, so I didn't know.
Should we be considering spending it from a different source?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And then I'm sure, you know, Peter, you have other fungible things that you could put in.
Yep.
All right, so we, we, I think we have a clear path to submitting the application for um, now we need to, all right. So we need to take that out of S R.
Yeah, well, um,
we need
Well, I would imagine some of the things that we saw go out before will come right back in.
Right, but we have to approve S R for submission on the thirty-first.
I'm up for a meeting on Thursday. If if we just do that. Make it quick. Ten minutes.
Um, can we
I'll do it in the morning.
It's gonna be Friday.
We would have to post for Thursday at like eight fifty-nine tomorrow morning.
We have to post.
Friday, you talking about Friday morning?
Fri- it's gotta be Friday.
Yeah.
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 Forty-eight hours.
No, we, so in order to meet Thursday night, we would have to post tomorrow morning at eight fifty-nine.
No.
And post anytime tomorrow.
Today's Tu- today's Tuesday. Forty-eight hours from tomorrow at eight would be
Friday.
Friday at eight AM would be the earliest.
I thought it was just the business hours that count.
No.
No.
Okay.
I mean, I'm fine with Friday popping in for whatever you guys want. We could do lunch.
We could do virtual lunch.
We do a liquid lunch.
Tell me the time.
Yeah, I could pop in Friday as well.
Friday during the day is not good for me. Friday at six?
Can we, do you, do you, do you want to be there if four of us can meet? We just need three people to approve.
Yeah. That's a good point. I've gone to enough meetings, so.
And and you all can anticipate the swap we're gonna just make here.
Yeah, Diane can, if you can go, I mean, you can run the meeting.
She sure can.
I don't have my work calendar in front of me. I'll keep it on.
Or is Saturday too late, Dr. Sankeyoni for this?
What? No, that's too Friday.
It's gonna snow Saturday, Mike.
Well, I was gonna say, I'm not, who's going anywhere Saturday? Aren't we just all
That's true.
Are we just sitting there watching two feet of snow pile up on top of us? I'm not going anywhere. I didn't know if that was too late for Dr. Sankeyoni.
No, it has to be the thirty-first, so that would, that would be good, Mike.
So when you want to meet?
Won't stop Amy from doing her prep.
Right, we're gonna, we know what to do, so.
So Saturday, quick fifteen minutes Saturday morning?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Jerry, if you're driving around, you better be in a plow.
I'm, I may not be here anyway.
Okay.
Okay, well.
Saturday at nine?
Saturday at nine?
Sounds good.
That's what I'm gonna post for, Saturday at nine.
We got three of us at least, right?
Yep, nine is good for me.
Nine is good for me.
Three of you don't show up, you're meeting on Sunday, so there's your motivation.
If it snows, we are all gonna be home.
All right, uh, now can we move on to the four principles? Five, the FY twenty-three school budget presentations, Dr. Sankey.
Right, thank you, Dr. Larkin. As you continue to work through the FY twenty-three and try to give you a deep understanding of this budget, uh, as a whole. We've, again, we've done the overview with you, uh, we discussed it a little more detail last night. You've got individual presentations on transportation, special education. And technology and tonight, and that's the five principles to talk to you a little bit about the needs of each one of our schools. From the perspective of the staffing that they've lost and the staffing that they'd like to see included. Um, so that we can best serve the students of Tivin. So with that being said, um. Looks like we're bringing up and, uh, where was, was that Mr. Connavali?
Yes, sir, I have Fort Barton up first.
All right, so I guess you're gonna determine the batting order, so that brings up, uh, Principal Ward, no, excuse me, Principal Dolly Roach.
Hi, good evening. Um, it's a pleasure to be before you and I will not take long. Um, I think it's, um. Pretty simple, you know, we have been blessed with a high-quality curriculum, appreciate all the investments there. And, uh, great professional learning and, um, the staffing and maintaining that quality of instruction is really. What we're seeking in this budget, so you'll see continuity across our three elementaries, of course. Um, the quality of instruction and keeping an evidence-based approach to math intervention is just something I wanna highlight, so. Increasing not only the numbers of students receiving math intervention with the restoration of our, um. Math specialist, a remedial math specialist or math interventionist. But also the, um, intensity and the frequency of that intervention. We've had. You know, a cut there and been going along as best we can with part-time math intervention. Kids needs three times a week and the math interventionist is only available two times a week. Uh, we know we're not honoring the need, so having that. Um, restored is huge and we're really grateful that that's been, um, done now through SR two. Uh, and that's a, a big, a big piece of what we need. We're also really grateful for the building sub, which is in the SR funds right now. It makes a big difference when our staff is out, so. Um, that's a huge piece of it. Historically, as you know, we had, um, a library. Position cut, that position that was shared across the three schools that has, uh, was cut in FY twenty-one and not restored. Um, we had that math specialist, which has just been restored thanks to SR. And, um, also a guidance counselor here at Fort Barton was half-time and that position has not been restored. Um, we did, of course, reallocate the, um, remaining positions so that we do have some social emotional support here. Through a social work position and, uh, we are making do as best we can. Um, but we're grateful for the restoration of the mass interventionist and really hoping to sustain that long-term even beyond the SR funds. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, but that's it in a nutshell.
Okay.
That was an excellent nutshell.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to the committee, Ms. Spalish.
That was my comment.
Okay, Mrs. Pavo.
No, nothing.
Mrs. Farner.
No questions. Thank you, Amy, for, uh, expressing it so well.
Mr. Dakota.
Um, no, Amy, thank you.
Mr. Farley.
Um, yeah, I did have one question and I apologize if it's. More obvious than I think it is, but, um, what's the? Is there an English specialist or like a science specialist in the building or is it purely a math specialist?
It's a great question. Um, we have a one full-time reading interventionist or reading specialist and now. Uh, renewed one full-time, uh, math specialist, so. Students get those two core subjects that are very developmentally necessary. We know we wanna have all kids, um, on level. Um, before the end of third grade and so, um, we have that additional intervention. Available in those two core subjects.
I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, uh, there was English. I didn't know if it was cut in the, uh, FY twenty-one.
It's a great point. Thank you so much.
And any questions from the public, Mr. Carvali?
There are no questions, Dr. Larkin.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Uh, who's next?
We've got Picassit.
Good evening, everyone. Um, parts of the slides that you'll see with the elementary schools are similar. So the parts of the slide that are similar right now are the positions that were cut previously at Picassit. Um, again, the district library aide, um, we lost at Picassit. A grade one slash two classroom teacher. Um, we also lost a guidance counselor. Um, our math specialist was initially split. From full-time and went between all three buildings last year, but now has been restored due to SR funds. Um, we are still missing a full-time school psychologist. We've posted for the position all year long. It's already been posted four times, two different ways. We've reached out to, um, retired school psychologists and we have absolutely no one. And it's a real big hole in our school. So when we built up the, um, the goals for this year, we collaborated with all of the teachers at Picassit and also our school improvement team. And so we wanna first maintain present program levels, but also to increase the number of students being helped. Through Title One Math and Title One Reading Specialist. And the last thing is really to fill specifically the school psychologist position. So when we looked at increasing Title One Math and Title Reading, Title One Reading Support. We looked at where our students were when they entered kindergarten this year. This year's kindergarten class, we had approximately thirty percent of students entered Picassit. With kindergarten entry skills in September. The other two schools were at fifty and sixty percent. So that's an automatic gap between Picassit students and the other two students. And as you can see. That gap, no matter how many interventions we do, it's very hard to reduce that gap. So we are requesting a, an additional point five Title One Math Specialist. And an additional point five Title One Reading Specialist. And those point five positions will specifically work with kindergarten students and first-grade students. To really help close gaps in, in the foundational skills of math and reading. Um, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Suzette. Turn it over to the committee, Mrs. Farner.
I have no questions. I, I sit here and I'm really in shock. And, and I really do hope that you're able to fulfill that position.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dakota.
Um, no, thank you, Suzette.
Ms. Spalish.
So either for Suzette or Dr. Sankeyoni, so the additional point five, the Title One Math, the Title One Reading. Those are included in the thirty-five million dollar budget?
Uh, no. Again, our, our thirty-five million dollar budget represents a level service budget, so it's.
That's what I thought, okay.
This year. Um, you know, we'd like to get back some of these positions that we've had.
Okay, that, yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, that, that. Our, the budget that you proposed doesn't bring anything back, doesn't give us this additional. So when we're seeing this stuff on these charts, it's not giving us these additions that, that our principals are, are so eloquently.
Right.
Making the case for.
Right, and this is, you know, part of the, as we discussed last night a little bit, if. We could achieve the thirty-five million dollar budget through other funding sources, it frees up SR for the design purpose of SR, which would be everything you're about to hear tonight.
Okay, anything else, Steph?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Pavo?
No, thank you, Suzette.
Thanks, Elaine.
Mr. Farley.
Um, yeah, uh, two questions, um, one for you, Ms. Wardell. First, I mean, that, that gap is, um, very concerning. I, I mean, above all. I mean, I'm concerned for the students, I'm the student representative. It has, is that gap historical or has that shown up since COVID or is that showing, uh, just showing up this year?
Um, this is my second year at the school and when I really went back and looked at historical data, it has been present. And as we can see in RICAS scores, there is a discrepancy between Picassit's achievement and the other two schools. That's why we really dug down deep into the data and said, where does this gap begin? And it's really upon entry and, you know, it's a public school, so whoever walks through the door. We take them in, we welcome them, they're our students and we help bring them as far as we can. We just need additional support to help students close that, so additional targeted interventions can occur.
And in the past, has there been, um. Allocations, for example, more math intervention in Picassit than, for example. Ranger, not to point you out, but who might have some better math scores?
Um, day, year to year, I mean, you can go back historically, historically way back, Picassit had two full-time. Title One Reading Specialist, um, and. You know, it's not happening right now, so, um, we just wanna start rebuilding. And closing gaps as quickly as we can. And I have to give a shout out to all the Picassit teachers and families out there. I mean, they work with us so well, they give one thousand percent at all times. And we just wanna be able to give our students more to help quickly close the gaps, especially in the early grades.
Most certainly, um, and just one final question for you, Dr. Sankeyoni, actually. Um, was those two, um, or, you know. Are those math positions in SR three that you presented us with or are those a proposed addition?
Uh, there would be in SR three.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So just to follow up, so that the, the point five Title One Math and Title One Reading are in SR three right now, Peter?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the public, Mr. Carvali?
There are no questions, Dr. Larkin.
Okay, thank you, Suzette. Great job.
Thanks.
We've got Manny up to bed and Ranger.
Good evening. Here, here we go. It's, it's as far as the slide, as Amy and Suzette have already said, a lot of the elementary needs are the same. Uh, so we did lose a library aide, we lost great, a grade three, four, but teacher that was really successful back in FY twenty. We saw a lot of gains, uh, in, in that population of those students. So we, we lost a remedial math specialist. And we brought that remedial math specialist back this year, uh, in, under SR two. Uh, we need to keep that remedial math specialist working full-time at Ranger that we've had in the past. Uh, the educational, uh, gap because of COVID, uh, is really showing up a lot in math as well as, is reading. The, the, most students are being serviced in both areas, reading and math, but math has gone up to like twenty-four percent. Of our population right now is being serviced by our remedial math specialists. Uh, it's very important for those kids that are struggling, uh, to get the, the help early on in their educational careers. And, you know, that's why we're, we're really striving to keep these remedial positions in place. I'll take any questions. But one other thing I wanted to mention too, we, with the school psychologist position not being filled at Picassit this year, we've shared. Our guidance counselor two days a week, but so at least, uh, the students at Castle would get some services, which has cut down the services at Ranger.
Okay, thank you, Manny. I'll open it up to the committee. Mr. Farley, I'll let you go first. Any questions?
Um, uh. I mean, same points as before, um, just, I think it's, it's very important to think about the students and, you know, um. The gaps are certainly concerning and the fact that the school psychologists are stretched very thin. It's concerning, but, um, I'm, I'm glad their efforts being made to fix that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, um, Ms. Pavo.
So this is for, more for Peter, I guess, under S three, um, the elementary guidance position. Would that remain the same as it was this year? Ranger only and as needed somewhere else, you know, if another school needed for. We've got, we've got a, a full-time position at Ranger.
Yep. So we have.
Is that where she would stay?
Yes, that's correct. We have a full-time position, psychologist position in our budget for Picassit for next year. It's just filling the positions been difficult. What's happened is every district in Rhode Island got SR funds. Everyone wants to address the needs of their students, their social emotional needs. Everyone is out hiring psychologists, adjustment counselors. Completed the, the pool. So you got a kid in college right now? A degree in those fields because they'll have a job in a second.
Right, okay, that was, that was, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dakota.
Now, thank you, Manny.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Farner.
Um, ju- just to say that it's clear that, you know, the, the math specialists are gonna be key to success. Um, beginning at the elementary level and moving right up through the twelfth grade. Um, get, you know, getting these kids the, the additional attention that they need now. Can, can only, you know, set them up for success as they move forward. We all know that. And, and I guess that's the, you know, we've already talked about the psychologists, guidance counselors, et cetera. Uh, I just wanna thank Mr. Cabral along with the other principals for. Bearing with us this evening and helping us to understand what the, the needs are from your school's perspective.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Spalish.
Thank you, Manny. Um, I guess my only comment is when I, when I look at these slides, slide after slide after slide, this being the third one. That the cuts that we made are, um. They hurt. I guess I'll just, I'll just say that.
And, and it's cutting back on the services that we provide for our students.
Yeah.
And the thing that's really concerning to me, if we look at our SR three funding that you just, that you approved last night. We, we've got a lot of these positions being funded by SR three, which is one-time money. So we're gonna be faced with these same kind of, uh, you know, dilemma and same kind of discussions we've been having for the last five years. And we need to get these positions into, into our budget, uh, not on one-time, one-time funding.
Excellent, excellent point, Manny. That's it, Dr. Larkin, thank you.
Okay, um. Yeah, thank you, Manny. And, um, yeah, to your point, we have, we still have not recovered well. How could we have, um. From the double whammy of, uh, a. Structural deficit that was coming in from our increased special education costs from FY. Twenty-one, I think is when it's really started to hit. The level funding of that year and then a seven hundred thousand dollar loss in state aid last year. So, um. You do the math, as they say, and soon you're gonna need a specialist. Right?
You know, what I think people really have to understand is that as they look at these, look at these slides from, from the, from the building principals, these are all people. These are all positions that, uh, you know, we have, uh, teachers providing services to the kids, but to help them out and, and. You know, we need these people. The kids need these people.
Yeah, I, I, we had, what was it, like an hour and a half worth of layoffs hearings in. May of two thousand twenty.
Yeah, and, and it would, and it was difficult hearings where people were crying.
Very difficult hearings.
But, you know, the people that, that really put a lot of work in, uh, their hearts and soul into, into working with kids. We had to let go because of, because of funding.
Right, and we have not been able to bring them back to a substantial degree.
Right. The only thing that's saving us now is the SMY. Other than that, we'd really be in a, I don't know what would be. We, you know, we'd be in a situation where we, we'd really be letting the kids down.
Yes. Yes. All right. So again, thank you, Manny, Suzette, and Amy for all your hard work and great presentations. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. As you can see from the slide, the needs of the high school are very substantial, given the fact that they have definitely had a lot of cuts in the last couple of years. Some positions were absorbed by the creation of new courses. But overall, it's essential that we get some of these positions restored. We did have the opportunity to, you know, change things around a bit. My first request tonight is to increase the point five guidance position to a full-time position. Last year, that position was cut. We did reinstate it to part-time this year. But in order to make sure the needs of the students are met, we definitely need a full-time guidance counselor at the high school. We were able to reinstate the guidance department head and that helped a little bit as well. But when you reinstate the guidance department head, the caseloads shift a little bit based on agreements. So in order to get the students the services they need, we really do need that position. My second request is to reinstate the, or to make sure we have a full-time school psychologist at Tiverton High School. Right now, we only have a part-time school psychologist. We share our school psychologist with Ranger. Interestingly enough, but our signs of suicide data indicates that the needs of our students, the social emotional needs are increasing as a result of COVID and other issues. So it's essential that we have that resource available to our students. I'm also requesting the position of math instructional coach for Tiverton High School. You heard from the elementary principals that we have a great need for mathematics and coaching and intervention. However, I feel strongly that if we had a coach across all three of our schools or across the district, that we can improve math instruction for our students. And finally, I'm looking to increase the position of special ed coordinator at Tiverton High School. I have seen the benefits of working in both the middle school and high school and how you can really bridge the two schools. And so I feel like a coordinator who works in both schools wouldn't, would be able to transition the students and follow the I E Ps as, as they should, but with more focus. So those are my requests. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Okay. I turn it over to the committee, Ms. Farner.
Thank you, Mrs. Craven. Great job. I am looking at some of these proposals. I, you know, budgets being what they are, I don't know how we'll do it. But I really do love the idea of the math instructional coach. You know, I think the data we all know shows that, and Tiverton's not the only school district that has this issue, that, that math tends to lag for whatever reason that is. And, and working to close those gaps will, will serve our students well for their futures. You know, starting at the lower levels and right up to high school. So I think it's a, it's a great proposal. Don't know how we're going to fund it, but we'll, we'll think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And there is a lot of research to support coaching and how it can lead to better instruction for the students because they get more of a personalized one-on-one coaching experience where that coach would be in the classroom, listening to students, you know, solve mathematical problems, watch an instruction, given feedback, and they can go school to school. So they can go to the elementary school and look at what's being taught in the elementary classrooms and then enter the middle school and look at eighth grade algebra. And is it being taught in middle school the same way it's being taught in high school? So it's just, you know, if you have that vertical alignment, it's really, it really can make a difference. And we know, as we heard this evening, math is an issue across the district. So I would say that that coach wouldn't necessarily be in the high school all the time. I would think that it would be in the elementary and middle school as well. So like a district coach, that's the only way we're going to identify the real problems that we have with mathematics and instruction. So I do, I do believe that's a, a strong position that we need.
And clearly, your, your comments on the student's social and emotional needs, you know, it's so crucial in what I'm hoping will soon be a post-COVID world.
Right, exactly.
You know, it's so important at all of our schools. And certainly the, the fact that, and I hate to go back to Picassid, but it really, it really kills me that there's no school psychologist on site there at this time. Probably the school that needs it the most. So, you know, thank you for, again, pointing out that need.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dakotas.
Thank you for that. I hate to see any of these positions cut. I mean, I'm glad that guidance department heads back in, but I fought for that resource officer. It, it boggles my mind that we might not have had it. So I'm very glad we have that there. So thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Pavo.
No. Nothing.
Mrs. Palish.
Just my frustration that we have some of the best administrators I've seen in my 30-plus years in this district. And my frustration that I can't do more. I mean, we're trying, the school committee's trying. But I just commend all of you and please understand our frustration when we see and hear the terrific things you're doing. We hear the terrific ideas you're coming up with. It's extremely, extremely frustrated as a parent, as a taxpayer, and especially as a school committee member.
Hey, Mr. Farley.
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, I, I don't know much about the budget stuff and the financial, you know, jargon that is often said in these meetings. What I can speak a lot about is the students' experiences. And, you know, that's sort of why I'm talking here a lot. So I do apologize if it's overbearing. But I, I, I would like to stress that these guidance physicians, these school psychologist positions are very, very important. I know people who rely on school psychologists and will go to them to talk about their problems when they can't really go to other people. And the fact that, that students wouldn't be able to access that help is disheartening. And I also know my grade and the grade above mine are very, very competitive. And I know through talking to guidance counselors and to talking to my peers that they're very bogged down with college admissions, with admitting grades and helping teachers with Aspen and just the whole lot of scheduling. I mean, there was a scheduling crisis at the end of last year and guidance was really, really began bogged down. So I think those two positions, you know, among others, they're all very important. But those two positions especially are heavily relied upon by students.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions or comments from the public?
No questions, Dr. Larkin.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Craven. You're doing a fabulous job.
You're welcome.
The idea of a math coach. Great. Mr. Zatoli.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Santoni, members of the school committee, thank you for your time tonight. First off, as you can see, there were many positions cut at, at the middle school over the past couple of years. But Principal Craven and her group did an excellent job of being, you know, creating a schedule that, that no longer, because of that, these needs no longer exist. And I think there's been some lower enrollment. In fact, class size is very reasonable across the board here. One issue that we're really struggling with, and I brought it up at our ad council, and I think there was agreement across the board, is our, our school attendance or a lack thereof by our students. And I, I want to share a little bit of why those conditions exist and some of the actual data of our attendance issues and what I think would be a nice solution or a way to attack that issue. You know, we like to think of things as adverse childhood experiences or Aces. This is, this is from our school alone in the middle school. 34% or 177 of our students come from a single-family home. COVID is considered an adverse childhood experience now. For example, this pandemic has increased the number of mental health emergency room visits by 31%. This year, we've had 58 crisis reports. These are when children in the middle school report that they have suicidal ideation, self-harm, or abuse at home. These clearly translate to a considerable amount of absences. You know, you know, what we like to think of in education, when, when there are a lot of absences, it usually means something else is going on in the home. Let me give you a little bit of our absentee rates or data. 68, 68 of our students have 12 or more absences, non-COVID related. 15 of our students have 20 or more non-COVID related. 285 of our students have missed 10% or eight or more days. What I'd be looking for to attack this issue is especially trained special educator who would get great from support from a very strong psychologist, our social worker and our guidance, very strong department in totality there to create a bridge program. It would be a safe haven for these children with the hopes of bridging them back into a normal school day. Many schools call it a bridge program for that reason alone. What this program would give our kids, a safe haven or a landing spot, small group individualized instruction, coping skills, strategies, goal setting, communication with, with parents on a more ongoing basis than we can do right now, and a therapeutic counseling and a therapeutics place for them, all in the hopes of bridging them back to a normal school day. There's much more to a bridge program. But in essence, we, we get them, it's, we get them back to school slowly, one class at a time, maybe on a half-day, all with the hopes of getting them in a comfort, comfort zone and getting them back into a full day of school. I think, I didn't even really add this, but I think the principals here would agree. We see more anxious kids in public school than we ever have. So that's where I feel we would get a great bang from the buck with another special educator. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zatoli. Turn it over to the school committee, Mr. Dakotas.
I don't have any questions, but Andy, thanks for that. And what you brought up is important for us to remember. The reason why our kids aren't attending school, it's real. And my daughter's in the school and I know she has friends and I've heard the same thing. It's very true. So thank you for bringing that up and hopefully we could do something to help these students.
Thanks, Mike.
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Farner.
Thank you, Mrs. Zatoli, for pointing out something I, you know, I've kind of heard of on the fringes, but you really did help me to understand how critical some of these issues are that, that the kids are experiencing. I do have one question, though. A specially-trained special ed teacher, and I am not an educator. So, you know, take it for what it's worth, right? Would that teacher be, would the children that that teacher serves be required to have I E Ps for that purpose?
Not necessarily. Diane, I think in a true, true bridge program, you usually have an adjustment counselor, a special ed, and maybe a very strong teacher assistant in there. I think with one person, we would just double and triple team them with our school psychologist, our two guidance counselors and our social worker. So no, it wouldn't exclude any children I E Ps. It would be really any child that, for whatever reason, is, is not getting to school. And we just hope to get them in the door because the instruction, the curriculum, you know, Mrs. Craven can speak better to this, is, is rock solid there. But we got to get them to school.
Well, thank you. That, that helps me understand it a great deal. And again, the, the funding question remains. You know, we all need to do our best to make the case.
Thank you. And Mrs. Pavo.
Mrs. Zatoli, thank you so much for caring about our students and understanding the difficulties of so many families, not only here across the state, across the country, but, you know, you're doing a fine job and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Zatoli. Sam, any questions?
No, no, just again, reiterating those same points and thank you. Thank you all for bringing them up.
Thanks, Sam.
And any questions from the public, Mr. Carvallo?
There are no questions, Dr. Larkin.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank all of our principals for just really, Dev hit on it quite precisely when she said, you know, we've got such an incredibly strong group of administrators and kudos to Peter for putting such a great team together. It's amazing to see the work you guys are doing under duress and of course, the dedication of our teachers as well that you're leading. So thank you very much. And we are we're heading to the budget ramparts, so stay tuned. All right. I think we now are up to item five B. No, that was five B, five C. Request that the policy subcommittee be asked to draft a policy that requires a form filled out and backup provided for requests to be placed on the school board agenda. Mrs. Farner.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. I asked to have this item on the agenda tonight. You know, I've been a little bit concerned for some time that our agendas aren't always explicit enough for, for either us as board members or, or for the public to understand what the real topic is that, that's to be discussed in or voted upon. You know, I'm especially concerned that this could lead to an openings meetings violation or complaint if we were to vote on something that wasn't adequately described in the agenda. And beyond this, I'm also concerned about the lack of adequate explanation and backup that sometimes leaves all of us. I, I know for myself, I won't speak for anyone else, but sometimes leaves us unable to really adequately prepare for the meeting. I don't think this is anyone's fault. I just think that it's longstanding practices that have kind of gotten us to where we are. We do have an existing policy for members of the public to request to be placed on the agenda. That's policy 742. However, per that policy, school committee is exempt and is silent on any requirements for administrators or other employees wishing to be placed on the agenda. So, you know, we could go two ways. We could update that current policy to include expectations for board members and administrators, or we could create a new policy specific to these groups. At a minimum, the agenda requests would be required to be in writing for everyone and be specific as to the nature of the request. The copy of that request, as you saw in tonight's backup with my email to Carolyn, would be included with the backup for the meeting, along with any substantial documentation that's needed. Of course, you know, we could always also consider that certain recurring items wouldn't, such as monthly budget reviews, you know, would be exempt from such a requirement. Does anyone have any questions or concerns with this? Does anyone have any questions or or concerns with this request?
So the request really is just to have the policy subcommittee review it. It's not making a decision about the policy itself. Sort of, you know, saying let's let's look at it. Let's talk about it. So I'll open it up to other members of the committee. Elaine.
Diane.
Yes.
Would the subcommittee decide whether or not we would have two individual policies of policies? Or were we just going to stick with one? Who would make that decision?
Well, the the whole school committee would make the decision.
Right.
Coming out of this board tonight that, you know, the policy subcommittee would know what that is. But it would be per recommendation of the policy subcommittee.
Okay. Okay. All right, Diane. Thank you. Personally, I would like two separate policies, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Mike.
Yeah, I have no problem with discussing this and going to the policy subcommittee, whether it's the same or two, as long as it's like that having the backup is important. Being able to be prepared for a conversation is important. Sometimes it's weird to not know what to say because you have no idea what to expect. So I agree.
Okay. Deb.
Nope, I agree. I I especially I think it's worked really well. Diane, I know you gave us a copy of the town council's policy. And I think that's worked really well for them. So I'm I'm perfectly happy to look at it to Elaine's point. Maybe it's best to have you know, have one that sort of addresses non school committee, non non staff, separate from sort of how we handle the public, but in any but I'm I'm definitely in favor of looking at it.
So do we need a motion to refer it to the policy subcommittee? John, I'll leave that to you.
I I would say no, that actually the policies. I would say technically the policy subcommittee does not need the instruction of the school committee to take something up there. They have their own free will, if you will, to take something. The, you know, the the point of decision or the or the control point is whether or not the school poli- the school committee then enacts a policy. So you could write as many policies as you want, but they don't make any difference. Or not you specifically, but the subcommittee could meet five hours a day writing policies and submitting them to us, but if we don't take the month.
They won't.
It doesn't make any difference, right? So I guess my only and my only since we're talking about the agenda. There's a bit of a conflict of rules where one part of the policy and we we talked about this, so I think you just need to make sure you address that. There's one policy that says that the agenda is determined by the chair. It is, but in the policy that talks about someone requesting to be on the agenda, the implication is they, as long as they have duly executed the request, they they are, you know, they are to be put on the agenda, but I don't think that that's actually quite appropriate that there has to be some latitude for the committee to decide what is appropriate to be on the agenda.
All right. So that's so we can look at that wording too.
Yeah. You know, and it's not that I'm trying to exclude people from the agenda and I so is the the chair makes the agenda with superintendent and with the vice chair, but frankly, any issue of controversy, in my view, would come back to the committee itself if there were questions about whether or not something was appropriate for the agenda. And so anyway. Mr. Farley, do you have any comments about this?
Well, um, just one question, and I promise to keep it short. Would this be changing anything for the general civilian? So for a matter of if a member of the public wanted to get on the agenda, would it be any different with this policy change?
It might be. So so right now. Then that's, I guess, what I was getting at. There was a bit of a conflict of rules. One policy says that the agenda is determined by the chair. Another policy says that if someone executes a request to be on the agenda, then they shall. So it's sort of a must. They shall be placed on the agenda. But under usually usual parliamentary procedure, the the body itself determines its agenda. It's not, you know, this is it's not a we we actually allow with the, you know, exclusions that I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting through the mechanism of the open forum. Someone can come and address us about whatever they want to address us. But they don't have the right to place on the agenda, anything they just want to be placed on the agenda, you know, somebody could decide, you know, someone so is a kind of an absurdist agenda.
Dr. Larkin, if I may, this is running outside of my request.
Okay, I was trying to answer a question of one of the committee members. So someone could ask for for someone to be on the agenda, for something to be on the agenda. The policies as they are written right now don't necessarily require that their request be met.
But Ms. Farmworth, the direct policy that you would want to enact only applies to administrators and school committee members.
That was my request, yes.
But I'm perfectly happy. I'm on the policy subcommittee as well to look at the other issue as well.
I think you have to. I think you have to look at it in in total.
In in a whole context of it. Yep.
Correct. So.
May I ask Diane a question, please? Diane, the example that you gave to us, the town council
Yes.
sample. We had a request like this in our policy manual. What happened to it? This is what we used to give.
We do have that for the members of the public. It's it's a part of I think.
Seven forty and seven forty two, I think.
Is that seven forty something forty four?
Seven forty two.
Okay.
If you look in the seven hundred series, it has all the.
Yes, yes. Oh, I thought it was just because she put this sample in there. It kind of threw me off because I mean.
The difference Elaine, the difference is that the town council members have to fill that out too.
Okay, so this would be possibly.
We do not require that.
The new one.
As does the operator or or any of the the staff if they want to bring anything to the agenda.
Right.
As a taxpayer, I appreciate that. I, you know, I take a look at their meetings in advance to see if there there are items of interest and certainly if there are
Right.
you you can just take a quick look and you understand exactly what they're going to talk about.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we look forward to discussing this even more. All right. Next, and this was any comments or questions for our administrators or from the public?
There are no questions from the public, Dr. Larkin.
Yeah. Okay, next item is item five D, school committee member to serve on the sixth bank committee. So this is relatively brief. So right now, the sixth bank committee is provided for an bargaining agreement with N E A. Is there are two members from N E A and two members from the school committee, the two members from the school committee right now are Mrs. Pavel and myself. I just am not finding that I have the time to devote to that right now. So I'm going to step away from that subcommittee and looking for a volunteer to serve on it in my stead or instead of me.
And you tell us, Dr. Larkin or Dr. Senkione, when they meet? Like, is it at night? Is it?
So right now, it's typically at night. Sometimes it's late in the afternoon. It is an ad hoc schedule because it really only meets when a request has been made by.
Well, I since I I'm actually up in November, so I don't know how helpful it is, but I'm happy to fill that slot until I am my school, my my term is complete.
It's helpful till November.
Okay.
So hearing no other requests unless someone else wants to ask to be on it, which comes down to either Mike or Diane and your.
I mean, I'm itching to do it, but I'm gonna let them take it.
You can do it in November, Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the position will be open again. Perhaps.
Not that I'm putting out any of my uh political, but but you can rest assured twelve years has been enough.
Okay, well, thank you, Mrs. Palace. Then we are up to item six, old business F Y twenty two budget. Ms. Roderick.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. I will. I am aware of the lateness of the hour, so I will make this brief. I'm going to share my screen just so everyone can so I can scroll through this. Can everyone see the December budget actual?
Yep.
Okay. And again, I there's nothing of spectacular interest. We are have spent similarly on track to the same point as we did last year. And you know, whether it's on an individual light item or whether it's in total. We do have some expenses currently on the general fund that will eventually be moved to some of the grants like the S R two grant now that it has been amended and so forth. There's sort of been a lot of paperwork involved with that, so we didn't want to keep moving things from one place to another. As well as things coming off the general fund going on to our C R P, you'll probably see most of that or a good portion of that in happen in the January report. The the only other, you know, continued item of note is statewide transportation. Though the three hundred and thirty seven thousand that you see there is through December. I am working with Ms. Craigor on some alternatives for next year, and those are still in the works. Although we did have one student who ceased transportation for several weeks in January. And that should pick up again, but hoping that will save us some on that line item. And again, going through, there's nothing of particular note. Again, things for S R two and S R three will be certainly be moved over to those grant reports and come off the general fund as well as any capital improvements that have occurred and have been paid for to date from the the casino capital funding source have to be reported here. And and so in certain circumstances, particularly down in this fifty seven hundred series here, we may see some significant overages, but again, those will be funded with the capital capital funding. We did not enter any capital funding amounts into the budget, because of course, at the beginning of the year, we weren't expecting any. So like I said, noting the hour, I will keep it brief and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Hey. Thank you, Amy. Elaine, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Mike, any questions?
No, but appreciate the update. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No questions, but I I really like this format. Okay, good. Appreciate I appreciate this format. It's very useful, very easy to follow.
Diane, any questions?
I I only have two. Okay. You you made a great point with regard to the spending of capital. Are you required? I know you're required to report the expenses.
Correct.
Are you also required to adjust your budget with R I D?
We are not.
No. So you will show a a large overage in those categories.
Yes, my understanding is that we can elect to adjust our budget. I do believe, though, that you know, our budget, and you can probably correct me or counsel me on this better, that if there are any changes to those budgets, that it would have to go through the school committee. And then we would then make those adjustments. So I don't believe to them it makes a whole lot of difference.
Well, because when you when you reported, Amy, like at the end of the year, it'll show over, but then you'll show an offset of money coming in that funded them, right?
On the financial statements, we actually have to supply, it's like a you call a text file to ride that they quote unquote validate as part of the audit process, and that does include budget numbers as well as actual numbers.
Right. Yeah, okay.
And and my only other question is, do you have any concerns about, I mean, I we're six months in, right? Any concerns that the the budget will have any issues with being met?
Well, I I have just instituted a spending freeze for discretionary items in anticipation of like fuel, oil, electricity, those things that have gone up due to inflation. Those I am expecting to be over, but I have right after the first of the year, I like I said, I I asked the principals to curb any sort of discretionary spending. Obviously, if there's something that's crucial to the safety and welfare and education of the students, you know, we can continue down that path, but right now, again, it's going to come down to the wire and I think we're going to be okay, but we need to be very, very, very judicious in how we spend between now and then. Again, due to some unexpected expenses.
Well, certainly inflation is hitting all of us.
And it's hitting us hard again in those, you know, though the utilities, transportation as well, our contract allows for gas price adjustment, you know, a cost adjustment for that, although I do believe we have sufficient budget for that, but you know, any potential savings that I was expecting there, you know, might potentially offset the statewide and as you well know, it's it's a juggling act as long as at the end of the day that we don't go over budget.
Right. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
And Sam?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
And any questions from any of our administrators or the public?
No questions, Dr. Larkin. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
So we are that's all business. So we're on to announcement scheduled meeting. So we are meeting. So we are meeting, you are meeting anyway on Saturday. What did you set a time? Nine?
Nine.
Saturday at nine to final approval of S R funds.
Peter, you'll make sure that gets posted.
First thing tomorrow. Thank you.
And then we have a meeting February first at six to take up the final approval of the capital plan. And then our next regularly scheduled meeting after that will be February eighth. And then we're not meeting the twenty second here.
Of a school vacation.
School vacation. Well, I guess we'll decide that on the eighth, whether or not we need to have a meeting sometime in the interval for weeks. I am going to recommend, given the hour, that we take up the item eight A on the first. How do people feel about that?
Honestly, Dr. Larkin, I don't think it'll take that long.
Others?
Yeah, I won't. I might not be here on the first, so it's up to you.
I don't think it's going to take that long either.
Okay. Well, not going to take that long because I'm going to be asleep during it. All right. Not going to take that long because I'm going to be asleep during it. Alright. Alright, so I'm going to ask for a motion to move into executive session. Under Rhode Island General Law forty two forty six five A one job performance character, physical or mental health superintendent goes an evaluation.
A second.
Take a roll call vote, Mrs. Palace.
Yes.
Mrs. Farner.
Yes.
Mr. Dakota.
Yes.
Miss Pavel.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we are in executive session.